Billy's gonna put us on right now. All right, welcome back.
Okay.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
We are, we are gonna get back into the regular meeting. I just want to make sure everybody at home knows Donna Stock is on the phone. We're doing remote participation. It's kind of exciting because we haven't quite tried this before. So she is on the telephone. She just made a request that we take the public hearing in front of the Mill Villages Advisory Committee. In order to do that, I'd like to just get a motion to switch that around if you guys are...
Ma'am Chair, I motion that the Select Board take out of order the public hearing for fiscal year 2020 tax classification and place it after or before Mill Villages Advisory Committee discussion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Again, we're gonna do all of our votes by roll call because we have remote participation. So, all in favor by roll call?
Carl Sinai.
Presby.
Thomasai? Do we have...Donna?
Stock I.
All right, thank you. We'll get the hang of it. All right, so we'll take, we'll take the tax classification ahead of Mill Villages. But first, we have some announcements. That is me. Paving of Route 30 Waterville Street began yesterday. Police detail are on site and detours have been established. Brush disposal area will be open this Saturday, the 23rd, from 9:00 to 1:00, weather permitting. This is the last day it will be open. Anybody has some brush, make sure you get it there this Saturday. There will be a community meeting on December 11th at 7:00 PM at the North Grafton Elementary School with the Grafton and Upton Railroad to discuss the proposed quiet zone in North Grafton and at East and Waterville Streets. Representatives of the railroad will be present to discuss the proposal, including why East, East Street would need to be made one way to accommodate a quiet zone. Grafton celebrates the holidays this Sunday, December 8th, from 10:00 to 5:00. The Grafton Vendor Fair will take place starting at 10:00 AM in the municipal center. Jim, holiday events and activities will begin around noon and conclude at 4:00 PM when caroling and music will begin at the common. Santa is expected to arrive around 4:30 with the lighting of the town Christmas tree. Lastly, the high school is putting on the play 13 Past Midnight this weekend, Friday and Saturday nights at 7:00, Sunday at 2:00. They're always a great time, so if you're available, go support our high school drama kids. And next, we'll go into public comments. Is anybody here with a public comment? All right, we will go to Representative Morean.
As David makes his way up, can I just make one, couple points in terms of his leadership and his role in this community? I just want to take a minute to publicly thank you because I recognize the things that you've brought to Grafton, and I decided to make a list. It got a little long, but I do want to take just a second. The Pine Street Sales Partnership for the 8.8 acres, you're instrumental in that. The Decam Land Transfer to Mass Development on Route 30, another tremendous partnership. The earmarks for public safety, which you've secured for us. The grant for Route 30 for the sanitary sewer line that we're installing now that Jen just mentioned. The ADA Transition Planning Grant, those are just a few, you know, that's six things, and there's more, but all those things just enhance the quality of life and helps the operation of the community. And I just needed to kind of say all those things and say thank you for your efforts on all those things, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Tim. I really appreciate the kind words. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to come before the board. Congrats on the recent chairmanship. And Donna, I know you're listening, congratulations. I think I can officially now, on the record, although I did call you, but now I'm sitting in front of the board, congratulate you as well. So I will be brief. I know we have a robust agenda. I think first and foremost, I want to express my sincere condolences to Lieutenant Menard's family, and I also want to thank the courageous men who are in this room right here that certainly helped out everyone in Worcester and all of the stations in coverage. So I know that Grafton did have a presence trying to help out the city of Worcester, and trust me, it's not lost on all of them. So to all the firefighters who are here, thank you. A very quick update for you. It was a busy day today in Boston. We did the Hands Free Bill, finally, thank God. So we passed it in the House, it was passed in the Senate, and it sat in Conference Committee. And there were a whole bunch of reasons why it didn't make it out of Conference Committee, but that's to the conferees to figure out. But luckily, we got it reported out at the end of last week, and we were able to vote on it in the House today. I would anticipate the Senate voting on it tomorrow, and then it go into the governor's desk. We also passed children's health legislation that basically says that it requires mass health to cover individuals who previously were under DCF custody. Now they have to cover them until they're 26 years old. So it's a wonderful step in the right direction there, too. Tomorrow, we have another Conference Committee bill that's gonna be coming up, and that's education funding. So that bill, by and large, is a seven-year, $1.5 billion investment in education throughout the Commonwealth. The majority of the funding, as designed in the bill, does target low-income and ELL districts. So we're not gonna see a huge increase when it comes to that sort of funding. The big thing for us going forward is special education transportation reimbursement for out-of-district costs. So I know that many people were guarded and cautious with the numbers that they put out. Our Chair on the House side did provide me with some numbers. And moving forward with the anticipation of what we had last year for all the funding and what was in the GAA for the budget, it looks like if you fully fund circuit breaker reimbursement and the transportation for Grafton would be $889,365. So assuming that the bill didn't go forward, we would be losing out on $127,870. So that's a, you know, certainly when you look at 1.5 billion, that's a small number, but then we're expecting that should everything move forward correctly with, with everything that we're seeing for revenues and returns in our economy, we should see that, that sort of growth over seven years. I've talked back and forth quite a bit with Dan Gill and Jay Cummings about this, and keeping them continued in the conversation even up to leaving the State House today and emailing Dan back. So I just wanted to give you a little update that we do have a supplemental budget as well, because we closed the books on the last fiscal year with about $700 million on the plus side. And that's a wonderful thing because it allows us to put a substantial increase into the stabilization account. However, that bill has not made it through both branches, so because of that, there's the inability of us to agree on it, and it's leading to upwards of a billion dollars of lost interest because, you know, the leaders that are trying to pass it in both branches unfortunately can't come up with an agreement. So we're continuing to push for that. It doesn't make a ton of sense where we're trying to just put the money in the right accounts, why it's taking so long. And then I will say just two things finally, and going back to Tim's wonderful remarks, and thank you for them. We do have a coat drive. It's another one of the wonderful things that I do in all of my spare time, and that's gonna be on December 5th this year. It's gonna be right down the street at the Legion Hall. It's gonna be from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And we're accepting new and gently-used and hopefully washed coats for adults and for children. And I know Santa's gonna be a busy guy that week because he will also be at the Legion from 6:00 to 8:00. So hopefully, anyone can bring their children and see Santa and enjoy the holidays and give back to a great cause. The next day, that Friday, myself and volunteers will go around and distribute the coats back throughout the community. They go to all of our school districts that have a need. They go to the DCF office in Northridge, who services many families locally, and Piece of Bread, which is also Northridge-based, but takes care of the lion's share of individuals with need locally. The last thing I do want to say, too, it's something that I pretty much always say when I'm in here, and that's anytime that the town does apply for a grant, please let me know. All the grant applications and the processes are becoming quite, quite jammed up and very aggressive, and so what we're trying to do is, as soon as you can let me know that the town applies, I can lend my support behind it, and hopefully, we can secure even more funding to continue to try to do all we can. So I thank you so much for your time, Madam Chair, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just have one. The 127, 870, that increase for Chapter 70?
Yup.
Is that a, that's over a period of years, or is that...
That would be the first bump. That would be the first bump, and expect that over the seven years, that sort of increase.
I'm sorry, but that number, if I'm not mistaken, is for circuit breaker, which is not unrestricted for education. It is earmarked specifically for special education.
That's accurate.
Yeah, I believe it to be accurate, yup.
Special education.
So that's a big part of the transportation cost, and that's kind of where we're seeing our carrot, where other districts certainly are getting more in terms of just the Chapter 70 number.
It does help.
Peter, do you have any questions for David?
I just wanted to make sure we knew that part.
Anybody in the audience have any questions for David? Thank you, Representative.
Absolutely, thank you.
Morean for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming out.
Jen, I'm sorry, does Donna have any? We forgot about Donna. Does Donna have any question?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Donna. Donna, do you have any questions?
I'll chime in when I do.
Okay, thank you.
I'll chime in when I do, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Todd would cut out.
All right, next, we have John Allen is here to kick off Shop Grafton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's John Allen. I'm the Economic Development Specialist for the Town of Grafton. I'm happy to announce that we're about to begin Grafton's second annual Shop Grafton MA 2.0. Shop Grafton MA is our version of shopper local. It's what contributes to a great neighborhood, a vibrant neighborhood, a place where you can go out with family and friends, interact, and supporting our businesses make all the difference in the world to our community. If you attend, there's, I have brochures here, listen, all the businesses participating. If you attend 10 businesses and have them stamp your card, you could be entered to win a raffle. Raffle prizes consist of Nintendo Switch, an Apple Watch, a Fitbit, and some stores also contributing additional prizes. So there's a number of prizes that you can win, but it's really supporting the local businesses that contribute to our neighborhood that matters. The people that can participate include people who live in the town, people work in the town, and people who shop. If you fall in any one of those three categories, you can win, and we encourage you to participate. Thank you. Any questions?
Does the board have any questions for Mr.?
Once they get all the stamps, where can they drop the cards off?
Once they get their cards stamped, they can drop them off at Town Hall in the Town Administrator's Office, Home Field Credit Union, and off the Common Antiques. Our drawing will be the first meeting after January 8th. The reason the drawings are in January is because we give people a chance to pass their cards in, and what we're going to do is after the three prizes on the first electments meeting after January 8th, after that, we'll draw some of the prizes that the businesses are contributing, one per meeting, with the goal of taking Shop Grafton and expand it beyond the four weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
John, what's the first day that we can get our cards stamped?
Go for tomorrow. I'm in the process of getting the stamps and the stuff delivered to the businesses this week and next week. So the official beginning is the day after Thanksgiving, but some business owners said, hey, if I have the stuff now, can I stamp them because I want people to participate because it makes a big difference in their business.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great. Does anybody in the audience have any questions for John?
Leading up to this, we've been doing Facebook posts about the Shop Grafton campaign.
Yes, in fact, today, I shot a video with Bob Di-Toma.
It is a tough thing.
I know. Bob Di-Toma at Signature Finishes announcing that Shop Grafton was being kicked off, and we actually also interviewed the business owner who supports 40 different artists and learned a little bit about her business. And by shopping Grafton, you help contribute to those artists.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, next, as we voted at the beginning to move it up, we'll go into the public hearing for the tax classification. Peter, will you read the...
Absolutely.
Ma'am Chair, legal notice to Town of Grafton Select Board. Grafton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Grafton Municipal Center, Conference Room A, 30 Providence Road, on the question of the adoption of the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property and personal property for the next fiscal year in accordance with Chapters 40, Section 56 of the Mass General Laws. At such hearing, the Board of Assessors will provide all the information and data relevant to making such determination and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. The Commissioner of Revenue will not approve the tax rate of a town until the Select Board has held such a public hearing and until the town has adopted the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property. You may attend this hearing if you wish, and your comments will be received. Grafton Select Board.
Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Ma'am Chair, a motion that the Board vote to open the fiscal year 2020 tax classification public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call?
Carl Sinai.
Presby.
Thomasai? Donna?
Stock I.
All right. All right, the public meeting is open. Thank you for coming, Mary.
Thank you for having me, Select Board. The classification for fiscal year 2020. The purpose of this, the classification hearing is Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, allows the shift of the tax burden between property classes. The classification hearing consists of four votes to be taken by the Select Board. The first vote would be a residential factor, second would be open space discount, third, a residential exemption, and fourth, a small commercial exemption.
So Mary, before you go, can I just, I just want to tell the Board, and I did it with David, but it's, it's true. We set a goal in terms of new growth, and we did our budget estimates. We had it at 550. There's a lot of collaboration amongst departments, and I drive around this town a lot, and I see things that happen in terms of development. So things like the railroad, things like the conduit was going up for the utility up Route 30. You know, we talked a lot and we shared information about projects like that to make sure that they got included in the value. But to reach the number 893, which you'll get to, you know, we surpassed the $50 million investment threshold that yielded to 550, so now it's obviously much higher than that at 893.
893.
We were able to use some of that money at Town Meeting to increase the levy. So I just want to, you know, I know Ken's here, or I saw Ken earlier, and Masha and you, you know, you're doing, you know, great stuff with your staff and the Board to get us here, to have, you know, more money to do the things that are important to the community. So I just, you know, you've been here a while, you've done this with us three times, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And I know I'm tough on you in terms of getting that $50 million number all the time, but it's partly unjust, but...
It works.
It's great work. I just really, you did a great job, and I just wanted to tell you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, thank you. So back to the votes we have, we, the residential factor. This shifts the tax rate between the residential and the commercial properties, which is also known as a split rate. Open space discount, this will shift the tax burden to the residential from the open space, which we do not have any taxable open space here in Grafton. The residential exemption shifts the tax burden within the residential classes, and the small commercial exemption will shift the burden within the commercial and industrial class to give a discount to only the commercial properties that qualify. First, we need to establish a tax rate, and how, how does the town set this tax rate? I did put on the screen here some historical tax rates going back 10 years from fiscal 10 to fiscal 20. Okay. The tax rate is set by taking the total tax levy, and we divide that by the total assessed value of the town. Your tax levy is the total taxes to be collected on your real estate and personal property, and this amount is determined by the Town Meeting in May and October. To determine the levy limit, we have to start with last year's, the prior year levy limit, which was $37,515,491. This is where Proposition 2.5 comes in. We are able to increase that by 2.5%, which is $937,887. For fiscal 20, we can now add our new growth in, which was $893,293, which is actually a value of $53,618,990. And then this will, the total, will bring you to your levy limit, which is $39,346,671. Now that we have our fiscal 20 levy limit, now we can add in the debt exclusion, which is $4.156 million, which is...
Can I just, that debt exclusion is debt service on all the debt cumulative throughout the town, so it's not new. It's all things that were voted on, but it's all just excluded debt. Our debt service is higher than that when you look at the budget, but the excluded portion is just $4.1 million, so, sorry.
That's okay. And the road stabilization, which is $1.5 million. We add these numbers together, we get our maximum levy limit for fiscal 20, which is And of that maximum levy limit, the actual tax levy that was voted on is $44,891,761. This leaves us an excess levy capacity of $111,842.
And you have historic comparisons for that? No, we don't have to get to it now, but I know you can get to it.
On the next page, this is basically a historical of our tax levies, of our new growth, our debt exclusions, any overrides, and excess levy.
I just want to point out, most folks in this room will know, 15, the orange at the top was the excess due to the override that we held back inside the, in the levy, really. And then as we grew budgets, that slowly went up until it's gone in 19 for the, for the override purposes.
Our next slide is new growth by class. So we had new growth of $893,293. And this is one of the, this year, we actually almost had a 50-50 split of residential and commercial industrial growth. We had, I'm gonna put my glasses on for this, 55.63% was residential growth, which is $29,830,670. Commercial, industrial, and your personal property, that came out to 44.37% of the growth this year. And $13,613,000 was in commercial, and we had $10,174,000 in personal property, which had a lot to do with the utilities that have come in. A lot of this growth is due to building permits and new construction, in additions, change in use in some of the properties. Through our cyclical inspections, we've picked up items that weren't, that we had never picked up before. We did a full field review this year for all our commercial industrial properties, pavements, any signage that wasn't included in our values was added. This is all growth. Also, the railroad station put, built a big building, which is about $1 million, in growth there. We have substation on Waterville, which was a huge increase in our, in our growth, and 100 Milford Road is the second phase of their storage unit, so that was another million plus in growth on that. I handed out a sheet to everyone, and basically, this has historical growth in the excess levy capacity over the last 10 years. And I did just want to note that back in 2010 was the only other year that basically our residential and commercial growth was almost 50-50. Okay, now that we have our levy, which is our budget of $44,891,761, we take that and we divide that by our total assessed value of the town. Okay? The assessed value is based on our 2018 sales, so that's how we come up with our values for our properties. The overall assessed value for the town is $2.720 billion, which is 7.45% increase over last year's assessed values.
Mary, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Is that increase in assessed values, is that a typical percentage, or is that, is that high?
That's actually, on the next page and also on the back of your handout. Historically, this, this increase is due to, one, of the, you know, all the new growth that we've pulled in, and also the values of the property have gone up. So this 7.45% increase is one of the highest we've seen in the last 10 years.
You had, we don't, we don't go back that far on this sheet because it'd be a huge sheet, but you had contraction in nine and 10 and 11 because of the recession. The value never went below, but it went to, there was no growth, and I think in 10, in terms of the overall assessed value. So that's why there's a negative number of 13, because you used data from the previous year.
Right, because it was for the sale, so basically, the value did go down because of that.
Right, and one of the things I just do want to point out for people is when they get their tax bill and they're confused about increases that they see above and beyond 2.5%, they, I think colloquially, people sometimes think, well, Proposition 2.5 means my taxes can't go up by, by more than 2.5%, but really, that's not the case. If your property increases in value and the assessment has such increases...
The 2.5% basically is saying that the town...
That's right.
...can now levy 2.5% more.
Right.
It's not saying that your tax rate, your, your tax bill can only go up 2.5, so...
There's tons of confusion. I had board members that said, how can it go up 7.5%? It's parked 2.5, and it's all about that levy increase and what Town Meeting votes to raise appropriately.
Right.
Of course, we proposed it and recommended, but the town ultimately votes on it.
Are we, any other questions for the historical assessments? This is a slide showing you over the years. It's more of a visual, the increase in our residential values going from 15 up to now. A lot of this is based on our sales, so, and also any new permits, any new construction, this is bringing the value of the town up.
And that's just one class, residential.
That's just the single-family residential.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you just go back to that one second? So the overall assessed values over the past five years have increased by a half a billion dollars?
Yeah, and that's just for your single-family residential, that's single-family.
Okay.
Yeah. And if you go to the next slide, that's going to show you the, the assessed values for your commercial, your industrial, and your personal properties that have gone up. If you note on our industrial, this year, we've had a significant increase, which is wonderful with the industrial. This is, we have had additions to Dimitri and Dana, which are industrial properties. We've had the railroad, million-dollar building for their locomotive in there, and Milford Road is, is also industrial, so these all have helped with the industrial growth on, for this year. So now that, for the assessed values, the average single-family home this year has gone up to $419,388. This is a 6.53% increase from last year, and these, once again, are based on what the sales market is doing. Last year, we were at 391 and some change, and now we're at 419. Our condos, the values are $253,060, which is about 5.1% increase from last year's values. This slide here is, this is showing you in comparison, the values are increasing, but if you, if you look at this, your, your tax bill is basically steadily going across. There's no significant dips or spikes in the tax bills themselves, even though the values are, are increasing dramatically over the years. Now, to set the tax rate, we have our total levy of $44.891 million, and we have our total assessed values of $2.720 billion. We're going to divide those two to get, divide that out, and we're gonna come out with a tax rate of $16.50 per thousand. This is a 16-cent drop from our tax rate from last year, which was $16.66. Just to note that all our values are certified by the Department of Revenue, and then once all those values are certified, then when we set the tax rate, they have to certify that also. So, and this year, we did have a reval year, so they literally went over everything in our office, did field reviews to verify that my data was correct, and we, we had certification on...
Donna lost connection, I'm sorry. Can you redial her? Donna, I'm sorry, do you have a time of when you might have got disconnected?
Uh, just forty-five seconds ago.
Thank you.
It was a quick disconnect. All right.
Thanks. All right. Mary?
Okay, okay. So now, we have a tax rate of sixteen-fifty. What does this do to our single-family? The average single-family tax bill, we take our new average, um, assessment of fourteen, uh, four-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, three-eighty-eight, we multiply that times the tax rate of sixteen-fifty, this comes out to six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and ninety cents. This is generally an increase of si, three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, or five, five-point-two, seven-five pers, oh, I can't even talk now, five-point-two-seven percent from, from fiscal nineteen. And, now that we have our tax rate, um, we can go on to the votes that are required for our classification hearing. Our first vote is going to be your, your residential factor, which is to shift your tax burden between your residential and your commercial class. Um, this is also known as a split tax rate historically in Grafton. The factor has been one, so there is no split. And the next slide will show you, um, this is just to show you what would happen if you do, uh, at a factor of one, tax rate is sixteen-fifty for both classes, your tax bill for your average single is approximately, um, going up three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, your commercial properties are going to go up three-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars. At the bottom, very bottom line, we have a one-point-five split, um, factor. This would take your residential rate, put it at fifteen-sixty-eight. This will bring your commercial rate to twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents per thousand. This, the change in a single-family house, they would only increase twenty-two dollars, but for your, your average commercial tax bill, that would go up five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars from last year.
So just to show it a different way, this-
So this is-
You can't really save enough to justify a split. You get to seventy-thirty split in terms of the makeup for commercial, industrial, personal property versus residential, then you can do that and save, residents a lot, of course, the commercial is going to bear that.
Right now, we have a ninety-ten split between residential and commercial. Um, so if you notice, on the, on this chart, we'll show you that it, it's a little savings to the, to the residential, um, tax bill, but the commercial tax bill definitely increases and skyrocketed. Vote two is for our open space discount, and this gives an, up to a twenty-five percent discount to our open space. Uh, this actually increases the residential tax rate, but there is no tax, no taxable classified open space here in the town of Grafton, so historically, we vote no on that.
And the reason why these are in there is because the law requires us to vote them-
No matter what.
So people know.
Uh, vote number three will be your residential exemption. Residential exemption gives up to twenty percent discount to owner-occupied residential properties. It literally shifts the tax burden within the residential class. The impact is to the overall residential class, it will shift the tax, it will shift the burden from the less expensive properties onto the higher, higher-priced and non-residence home. Uh, this benefits would be to communities with a high number of vacation homes and non-owner-occupied properties. Right now, there's approximately eleven communities in the state of Massachusetts that actually use this option. It's used, it's down the Cape and the islands where the, um, vaca, a lot of vacation rentals. This slide here is just showing you, uh, a comparison of, for, with a residential exemption. If you, if we take, um, the six-hundred, I mean, six-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-eight residential parcel, parcels, five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-five would qualify for this exemption. This would bring your residential tax rate to twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents per thousand. The lower-valued homes, say, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, their taxes would decrease by four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. The average single-family would increase by two-thirty-nine compared to the three-hundred-and-sixty-five. Any of the higher homes, six-hundred-thousand, um, they would increase by thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. So if, the, the, where it splits right there in the middle would be your average, and if you notice what the, um, the discount, the higher-priced homes would actually take the impact of that. Fourth vote will be a small commercial exemption. Small commercial exemption, uh, this gives up, up to a ten percent value off a commercial qualifying property. To qualify, they have to be less than a million dollars in value of asset, and that each business in that property has to have less than ten employees. I, I note on this that each individual parcel would need to be reviewed for qualifications before we can even set a tax rate. And, um, the increase for the commercial industrial tax rate, and it shifts the tax burden onto the larger commercial properties and all the industrial, because the industrial properties do not qualify, so they would not be eligible for any of that discount. Presently, there's about, there's only seven towns in the state of Massachusetts that use this small commercial exemption. The historical votes for the town of Grafton for a residential factor has been one, which is no split, open space, no, residential exemption, no, and commercial exemption would be no. And at this time, you would need to motion to what you would like to vote on.
All right, well, we'll still, uh, we're still in a public hearing, so is, does anybody on the board have questions for Mary?
No, just a comment, though. Mary, excellent work.
Thank you.
You know, when we were talking about, um, new growth, a couple of years ago, we were talking about looking for a million dollars this year, and that didn't come to fruition, but not because of all this. Um, you know, there were, there were totally different factors at play. Um, and all the same, you know, absent some major development, um, that we were hoping for, you really have gone after it, and, um, we have, I, I think, an excellent result here to show for it. Um, you know, to see that people's, um, residential assessments are trending in a, in a positive direction, and to see that there are businesses willing to make, uh, capital investment here in this community, tho, those are good signs for us. Um, and to get that tax rate sixteen-point-five is, is good, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Peter, do you have any questions or comments?
I have a question, more of a procedural one. So when we take a vote tonight, do you need to have four separate motions outlining each one?
No.
Yeah, I just, yeah, because, you know, the way that you're describing it to me is you need four separate motions for each one of those components. Tonight, I'm going to read one that's going to include all four of them. So you tell me Department of Revenue's fine with the way that that's, that's on you guys.
Donna, do you have any questions for Mary?
No, great presentation, and thank you for, I got the visual as well, so that was very helpful.
Mary, actually, you have one more question. Um, so, when we were going through the, the new growth number, eight-ninety-three certainly is a historic high, um, I remember asking in two thousand and eighteen, when we hit the seven-eighteen number, because that was a big one for us as well, whether or not that was something sustainable, and the answer I got was no, probably not. Um, so we're going to ask the same question about this eight, about this eight-ninety-three number going forward. And over the course of the next few years, are we going to be looking at numbers this high for new growth based on your expectations?
Um, right now, we have a lot of developments for residential going in, we have, uh, sixty-seven lots subdivision that's gone, that's been split, we do have the, um, Wheeler Road project going into, the developments that are going in, and, um, so I, I, I err on the, on the side of caution, so if we say like five, we estimate for five-fifty for next year-
Yeah.
Um, if it's more, that'd be great.
Right.
If any commercial comes in, um, these, these are the big assets that come into the towns that will actually bring that, that, uh, growth value up. So, I'm comfortable estimating going forward at, at the, the five-fifty-
Okay.
And, and hopefully, you know, the market stays great, and we can build, and, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any members of the public that wish to comment or have, comment or question? Sure, come on up. Just make sure you state your name and address.
I don't have, that was a great presentation, by the way. The, the only thing I want to bring up, excuse me, and I talked to, uh, Ray Mead, Brigham Hill Road, um, and I talked to Representative Meridian while he was here, and I've mentioned this quite a few times, is that, um, taxes are never going to go down, and everybody knows that. That tax rates can go down, values go up, and it offsets, it offsets that. But proposition two-and-a-half needs to be addressed by the Massachusetts State Legislature and the Senate, because it worked when it started off, it does not work anymore. For example, if, uh, based on this report, if proposition two-and-a-half was changed to proposition three-and-a-half, the excess levy limit that you would have going into this, for the next fiscal year would be about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars compared to a hundred-and-eleven. So, I encourage the board to talk to Representative Meridian and Senator Moore and other legislatures, legislators, about revamping proposition two-and-a-half, because what this creates is, at ninety-ten, that was shocking, by the way, ninety-ten is, is, that's very shocking. It's going to create overrides on a yearly basis in towns like Grafton that have a ninety-ten ratio, and it's just not going to work. So, it, it's just more of a comment, I encourage you guys to talk to them, revamp proposition two-and-a-half, yes, it does raise your taxes, but not as much as overrides are going to raise your taxes. So, that, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? All right, have a motion, close the public hearing?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to close the fiscal year two thousand and twenty tax classification public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on closing the public hearing?
You will roll call it?
Yes, we will roll call it. Uh, all in favor, by roll call?
Carlson and I.
Please go.
Thomaside?
Doc, aye.
All right, um, Peter?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to adopt a residential factor of one-point-oh, no open space discount, no residential exemption, no small commercial exemption, and give authorization to the principal assessor to electronically, electronically insign and submit the LA-dash-five to the Department of Revenue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, um, any discussion? Hearing none, by roll call?
Carlson and I.
Please go.
Thomaside?
Doc, aye.
All right, it has passed. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for your presentation.
All right, so now, um-
There are two documents, so you sign on those two pages, and then one other. Peter, as the clerk, can attest to the vote.
Yes. Yes, we have that as well. Yep.
Tim, in the future, can we get a copy of this presentation-
Yeah, please.
-before the meeting? I would just love to have seen it before.
Yeah, we put finishing touches on it today and ran through it with staff to make sure we-
Okay.
-covered it. Um, we, we will do our best to, to try to get it to you ahead of time.
All right.
But I, I just reserve the right to change it in case we learn something with a typo or whatever.
Could we get it, though, now, like, after the meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You can check this out now.
All right, um, the next on the agenda is Mill Village's Advisory Committee, uh, to discuss the committee recommendations for improvements to the park. Get us some, can, or? Thanks for coming.
Nice weather.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Gru and myself was one of the members of our committee. Uh, what we want to try to get, some of the stuff that we'd like to get done down the park and along the riverbed, and one of the things we'd like to do is put a canoe ramp in and a, uh, kayak ramp along with the river from the waterfall down through the valley and down to the next, down to Deep Oak Street. Uh, we, this would have been done, uh, two, three years ago.
Two thousand twelve, thirteen. Two thousand twelve, thirteen.
Yeah, right, you know, two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, and, uh, we were going to have, it was, we were working on it real good till the state fisheries and games, we're going to take care of the whole thing, but the walkway in and everything else. I mean, it was going fine, yeah. So Conservation got a hold of it, and that was the end of that. Sayonara, can't do it. Okay, can we, no, we didn't even can't do it. No, that was it. So that's where we stand now. And not only that, before this, we, we, uh, we, down the back of the community house, we were doing a little landscaping, cutting the brush down and cleaning the area up, and, uh, got a notice from Conservation, uh, to appear before the meeting, and we went, went to the meeting and said, you can't do that down in the back of that building to the river. And, uh, they told us you can't do it, well, I don't know how they knew we were doing it, somebody had to tell them, but I found out later, I guess they see it from the satellite, and it spotted the people working down the back down there, that would put the old squash to the thing. So now, we, we, we want to get going, and we're going to see how far we can go. We've got, only fifty more bricks to do, we can get that area done, and we get the, uh-
What was that?
No. We get the whole recommendation done, and we're, we're good. And, uh, I can let you, I can, uh, let Mr. Gru, this is his writing, and he can tell you more exactly what we'd like to do, if you want that.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, you know that the Fisherville mill site is now coming up for, uh, actual improvement. Gene Burnett, uh, recently, uh, told Julie Roberts, who's a member of our committee, that, uh, he's cleared up several legal matters and is ready to go on it. And Julie has worked with him in the past. A part of that Fisherville upgrade is, uh, a perimeter walkway around by the river and the pond there. And what we'd like to do is at Mill Village, have a walking trail and have that be a fitness walking trail going from, uh, by the, uh, bank, the small bank that's there, all the way over to the other side, to the railroad side, with fitness stations along the trail itself. Uh, next is the, uh, brick program. We've had the brick program ongoing for a number of years, and that was run out of the, uh, Ann Morgan handled that for us, out of her department. And we still have currently approximately ten-thousand-five-hundred dollars in that, uh, budget. Uh, again, we can't extend that without your approval, but, uh, we would like to see that program comple, completed. Right now, uh, there are approximately fifty bricks to be sold at a hundred dollars each, and we were hoping it could be publicized like you're publicizing this shop Grafton, shop local. A lot of new people in town, we would hope, would like to be a part of the town by purchasing a brick, having their family name there, have a commemoration to somebody in their family, but fifty bricks, and that will finish it. And would like to have that, uh, publicized by the town and see if we can finish that. Next is the greenhouse. Again, the greenhouse is, uh, now in much better repair. Uh, Nick Burnett and, uh, Gene Burnett have taken a special interest in that. And again, Julie Roberts, when she was a graduate student, was involved in that greenhouse, and as a part of that, we'd ask that you appoint Julie as a liaison for the town with the Bernatts for the development of that particular site. And, again, uh, with the honor of WPI, uh, I would think that we get the environmental people from WPI to be interested. They've been down there before to do studies, and they came down to clear the brush and to clean it up when it was in disrepair. So it's a great teaching situation, and hopefully, with Donna, and then with Julie and the Bernatts, we'd be able to get that into a very viable situation. So that's a, a recommendation I hope you take to heart, and do appoint her as liaison. Next is the irrigation system. As you may know, uh, that's a, literally a sandpit. We've had green stay there this year because we've had a very wet season, but it's all really sand and gravel down there, and it doesn't sustain itself in a hot summer. We wanted to put irrigation in, it was a recommendation we made, uh, what, two years ago?
It was a while ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago, anyway, but, uh, what, what we'd like you to do is to see if you can interdict on behalf of that park to ask the South Grafton- ask the South Grafton Water District if they would make an exception to allow an irrigation system to be installed there. Now, we can do feeding of the water from that, afar that, from the Blackstone River and/or from the greenhouse. The greenhouse has a system in there where it takes the water from the Blackstone Canal and filters it and cleans it and shoots it back into the canal, into the river. So it's a project that really could be beneficial not only to the park, but also to the Blackstone River. So again, your assistance in that would be greatly appreciated. It's highly recommended.
So, just to, so that I'm understanding, so we were, we were doing a plan, and then the South Grafton Water District said, uh-uh.
We wouldn't have to take any of the water. South Grafton is their own separate water district.
Okay.
And they have a regulation, you can't have irrigation.
Oh, okay.
So that's why, there's several ways of solving it. But the best way would be to ask them if we can install the irrigation system, not using the water supply, but using the Blackstone River and/or the greenhouse, so that it would not draw down the supply of the South Grafton Water District. Summer movies. We've had summer movies there in the past several years. However, we did not this year. We brought it up to the park, not the park, Recreation Commission, and we said, you know, we'll pay for one of the movies, and you have them. We thought that one of the movies would be in South Grafton. It was not. They were all up at the center. What we're recommending is that you have three movies minimum, one in south, one in center, one in north. We already have the park in South Grafton. You have the Carmen in the center. And I believe it would be advantageous to consider Airport Park for a third movie location, so that the whole town starts to have an interest. And they're pretty well attended, so that would be another recommendation. With the thought that you might also contact Tufts University and see if they want to have one up there for their students when they come back in September, just as some ki, or August when they come back, as some kind of a welcoming back program. So it could be a fourth one, too. And again, to get more of the community involved in community activities. We think it has a lot of merit. The outdoor concerts. We've had concerts in the South Grafton Mill Villages Park for a number of years now, particularly Flag Day. And then we've had different concerts the last couple of years. We've had the high school band come down, and we've donated money to them for instruments, for reeds, strings, things of that nature, above and beyond what they have in their budget, because of them coming down and performing. And we'd like to have those every year. But again, we have to have your permission, and we have to have money. So just making note of that. And we do that in concert with the Recreation Commission as necessary, as directed. However, that's another part of the ongoing recommendations. Another one is the fencing. Several years ago, we had one complaint relative to the boulders we have there. We instituted that type of fencing because there was no cost. The Bernatts said, okay, we'll bring boulders over, we won't charge the town, and we'll space them to see if we can keep the vehicles from going on. And it's worked. But someone came up with the idea we should have fencing there that's like on the Carmen. And we brought a recommendation in with finance, not financing, figures for that to be done. We gave you a schematic of it, but that's still out there. And the question is, which would you prefer to have? The ongoing boulders, which are more scenic rustic? Or do you want to have a fence like you have at the Carmen? And that's a decision you people have to make. We're fine, as a committee, we're fine with the boulders there. It's worked. So that's that. And the final would be membership. We do need at least one more member, hopefully a younger member than our chair and the vice chair, but someone with some energy, somebody, we have Bob Perler in now, and he's come in with energy, and that's what we need and want. And again, it's a community asset, and we see that these recommendations in conjunction with the development of Fisherville Park, that would be wonderful. And if you have other parks that you'd like us to become involved in, because you changed our mission from just the park in South Grafton to villages, Mill Villages. So we, we were told that means the whole town, and there are a number of different places like Tufts, like at the Bollack property up in North Grafton, that are being developed and looked at for development. So if we can help you there, we're here to do that.
I got a question. I want to go back to the...
Peter, just, just a second. I lost one of my hearing aids the other day playing golf. I don't know where it is on the golf course, so I'm only got, I've only got one ear. I can't hear you.
It's in the woods, Ken.
It helps at home. My wife, I can say.
You get that, too.
Real quick, so you mentioned that there's a vacancy on your committee. Can I just go through the list here real quick and tell me who's still...
I'll be glad to give you the list.
Well, I've got Phil, Julie, Michael.
Boat ramp, walking trail, brick program, greenhouse, irrigation system.
I'm sorry, Mr. Grue. Your membership, like you said you had, you had a vacancy on your committee.
Yes, I believe we're seven in, well, it should be seven. We have six right now.
Okay. All right. So we need, we have a vacancy. All right.
Yeah.
All right.
Is that all you had?
Yeah, I did. Thank you.
Anything? So I just have a quick question. With the list that you've provided, what do you feel is your number one priority?
Getting the brick program back in, finished, clean that up, then we can go on further.
We have money to pay for these.
Okay. Okay, so that's where you feel we should start on your list?
And by the way, I did get confirmation from Representative Meridian, and Dave said, if we want to put in a grant application again for the boat ramp, which we had back in 2012, he'd be glad to push that through the process and support it. I'm sure Mike would, too, Mr. Moore. And the thing is, that this time, if we do it, we have to do it, because of the fact that if you don't within the year, and you have to put some money in yourself, and then they'll reimburse money.
Right.
But if we don't do it within that timeline, we lose the grant, and we go back to the, like the library, we go back to the bottom of the list. So, you know, we'd like to see that as another, and these are all pretty much priority, if you will, but...
Okay. Now, the boat ramp, though, you had said you were started to move forward earlier, and the, and Conservation said that we can't put a boat ramp there? Is that, has something changed?
As we were told by the Conservation Commission.
And the thing is, the grant came from the state conservation.
Right.
Okay, so we have to...
Fisheries and game.
We have to get some questions answered there first before we apply for another grant to make sure, you know, just to make sure Conservation is on board if they're going to shut it down again.
But that's, that's one of the difficulties here.
Okay.
It was made very clear to us that we only are to give recommendations.
Okay.
We've given them to you, we don't have license to go out and do...
Right.
...the other things that you're suggesting.
Okay.
We did that before, and that's when we were told, timeout. You make recommendations.
Okay.
So we're making recommendations.
Okay.
It would be something that the Development Department could look into?
Yeah, we can, we can...
Conservation Commission could answer a question for you?
Yeah, we can get that question answered.
But I find it difficult to see how the state Conservation Commission, and under Judge Peterson's direction, approved it, and yet we didn't. There's a, there's a difficulty in their understanding where we didn't meet requirements.
So Ken, it sounds like you guys need a permit, a conservation permit, to work in the wetland area. Therefore, you know, that's why they probably shut you down, is maybe it expired, who knows? But it sounds to me to move this...
No, no, this is before...
But it sounds to me to move this forward, that would be step one to Mr. Thompson's point, and then going, at least having that permit ready, and then reapplying for the grant.
Yeah, we can do some research and figure out what happened and...
Yeah.
The other thing is where the greenhouse is now, it wasn't supposed to be there. It was supposed to be down further and out of the area. But Conservation says, no, it's going to go here. You can't put it down there. Too close to the canal and all of this. We didn't want to battle with them, though. Okay, that's it. By putting it there, it costs Burnett more money because he had to run more pipe, and they put it out of the area. But now, if we get that out of there, and there's also something else that can go in there, I don't know if we're going to, it's ever going to get done. Everybody remember Millie Beans Bridge?
I don't.
It's right over here at Brigham Hill, where...
That was before your time, Ed.
Those things aren't.
That's where Millie Beans Bridge, and it was taken out, and the new bridge was put in. And that bridge is down on Farlet Street, right now sitting right here at Grafton Water District well site. Of course, all the trees are growing up around it now. Take that bridge and put that from where the canal is in the parking lot, and the people can park their cars, they'll walk over the bridge and come to the concert or whatever. But that's one of the projects we want to do down the park.
Okay.
Longer term, what we've thought of, too, because there is a federal piece of property there apparently, to see if the feds would throw some money into this also, because of the fact that it's the head of the Blackstone Valley and all of that development. At one time, we were talking to Ranger Rick and talking about maybe putting a station that they have in Uxburg up in Grafton. And that still may be viable if they put some picnic tables up there. You got the parking garage, or not parking garage, the space on the other side of the canal where you could develop that. It's still up for development, so there's opportunity there for the small business, for residential, low-income housing, veteran housing, all kinds of potential in that area.
Here's another thing that's in our favor. Megan Dupree, remember her?
I do. The old town planner.
She was our town planner. She has one of the big shot jobs down here in Rhode Island, where the Blackstone Valley Heritage Carla. It doesn't hurt to drop a dime, or you can't make a phone call for a dime or whatever. The old saying is, drop a dime, you talk to the person you want to talk to, and get things rolling.
Megan did tell us about two years ago, when we came in with the first group that of the same types of recommendations, did tell us that she'd be very willing to support us and help us. So again, she's a wonderful contact person.
She's on the federal side now, right? She's on the federal, she's on the federal side.
Yes, yeah.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, there's great potential there, and we'd like to see it developed.
Can you remind us?
If you don't go, if you don't go get it, you're not going to get it. Somebody else will get it.
Right. Can you remind us when you meet? So can, can you remind us when you meet as a committee? Do you meet once a month? When do you meet?
We haven't been able to get a quorum for various reasons for some time now, but we're going to try again after Thanksgiving to get together.
Okay. Great.
They just got the okay to name the bridge down there.
Yep. Yep, that was, that was great.
Dave was instrumental in that.
Yeah.
Representative Meridian.
Yeah. That's great. Well, thank you so much for coming in. Is there anything else? We definitely have a to-do list. We will see what we can...
You've got a shopping list, anyway.
Yeah, we can, we can start trying to take the easier stuff off of it.
We get the boat ramp and all that, and the first boat ride, we'll give you a ride in it.
All right. All right.
Sounds like a plan.
Sure, and I mark that down, and you get the first ride in the canoe.
All right. We, I have some kayaks. I'll bring them down. It'll be fun.
All right, guys.
All right, thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, just as an aside with what was said earlier by Ray, in that Prop Two and a Half, I'd, I'd second that, and I'd also point out is, you're coming up with the next informational study. We've got to be over the 20,000 limit, population-wise. New straight laws will kick in relative to the police department and the fire department, as you know, and that's, that's another reason to push them on that two and a half limit.
All right, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Did you have something?
Just a quick question for Tim. Has Gene Burnett reached out to you or Joe Layden with regard to his, with his plan right now?
I'll try to pull that back up. The parcel on the left on the park side?
So Tim is answering that question. Donna, are you still with us while Tim looks up something? Donna, are you still with us?
It's been about a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just, for the minutes, we're going to have to mark that.
When she left.
When she left.
So where it says Mill Villages...
Dan?
Oh, you are still there. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, when you do have to go, can you just let us know so that we can mark it in the minutes?
Yes, so I am about to go into the event that we're hosting out here, but please let Ken know that I'd be willing to help on the WPI student group coming out to help if necessary.
Okay. I will let him know. He didn't quite hear you. Donna had just said she's willing to help on the WPI end. All right, you got a thumbs up from Ken, Donna.
Yeah, I figured she would. Thank you, Donna.
Thanks.
All right, so Donna, I'm just going to note that you're, you're going to leave in a couple minutes here so that we, that's reflected in our minutes. All right?
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
So to answer Ed's question, where it says Mill Villages Park, that area on the left, on the other side of the canal, that was cleaner, if you will, for development, and Gene applied to planning to break that off, and we've had one meeting with a developer about the housing requirements, and there's a commercial component for the overlay district there. So that's, that's underway in terms of moving forward. It says Gene wants to recoup a lot of money, so...
Yeah.
That's going to be the hurdle for someone to actually purchase it and develop it. And I think the total is 241 in terms of housing units to be built with, you know, 10,000 or 15,000 square feet of commercial, but this side can be developed before the north side, so I think that's closer to being developed. But the whole thing needs to, needs to work mathematically to stay compliant with the state grant.
And is he looking for a mix of commercial and residential in both parcels?
Yeah, as required under the zone.
Oh, okay.
But this one will start with smaller amount of commercial space and more housing.
Okay. Good to know.
Any other? All right, let's move on to Fire Department Staffing Study update from the committee. Peter had...
Yes.
...asked to have this on the agenda.
Ma'am Chair, again, just for the, just for the public to know, I serve on the Fire Department Study Committee. As you're all aware, we were charged with reviewing a comprehensive report on staffing and structure within the department. I asked for this indulgence tonight to be placed on the agenda because the committee felt that there were some urgent components that they would like to give us an update on as a committee, but more importantly, take a position. We may or may not take a position tonight, but take a position on some of the recommendations before the final report comes out, because as we're making our way through this, we're, we're making very good progress. We're getting really good information on all of the components in really coming up with a comprehensive recommendation for the town, but we feel that there are some components that I have here tonight with me Superior, Bob Egan, Ray Mead, and Rick Lane from the committee. And if it's okay with you, Ma'am Chair, I'd like to turn this over to Ray to give us an update.
Yeah, so as Peter said, we've, we've met quite a few times. We've had a, we've had great discussions. We've also met with two visiting chiefs, so chiefs from Millburn Sutton. Got a lot of good information out of them. We've, we've come up with, we've, we voted on a couple of things. One would be the order of priorities of the MRI study. So...
So what we ca- what we did was we reviewed that study, uh, we came up with what we believe to be is the most important from one to eleven, um, uh, as far as, as far as what, what was in that study. Number one was organizational structure management and administration. Uh, number two was staffing, recruitment, and retention. Number three was training. Uh, four was emergency operations. Five was fire prevention. Six, mission vision and values. Seven was community risk assessment, um, then fiscal forecast, forecasting and capital planning, benchmarking and comparative analysis, and the last one would be facilities and apparatus. Uh, so what we did was we came up with a, um, a, an org chart to, uh, to submit to the board. And again, this is, as Peter said, this is not our final report, okay? But, but as things move on here, we, we probably won't do our final report until January, maybe? Probably, it'll probably be January to, to give you a full and final report. But there are things that, that we discussed, uh, last night, we had a public hearing last night. Um, we did have three people that show up, we, we had some good questions and, and, uh, it went, it went very well. On the org chart, so we're recommending, um, a full-time professional chief. An inspector, a full-time inspector, which would be at the rank of captain. A full-time fire prevention slash safety officer slash training officer that would be at the rank of captain. Uh, deputy chief, and that would be a call position. We also talked about, um, this isn't really, this is more of, of a, uh, organizational thing, but it's, but it would be in the org, org chart. And what we wrote is, is captains in cars. So we have three captains in, in town, north, south, and center. They respond to the stations and they get on a truck and they'll go, uh, they'll go to a fire. And what we're, what we're talking about is suggesting that they have radios in their cars so that they can respond to calls, um, either covering for chiefs or covering on a weekend or, uh, if it's close to their house or it's, it's better for them to show up at the call and start something going. Because, um, in, in our org chart, we're not going to have, and this is something we talked about last night, we're not going to have district chiefs anymore. So, uh, there won't be any, a north end chief or a south end chief or anything like that. As a matter of fact, Jimmy is, is retiring in two weeks, uh, and then we will not have a south end chief. Uh, we do not have a south, a north end chief currently. Um, there's only one, uh, chief and that's, uh, Deputy Mike Mills, and he's out of the center. So the captains would, would respond to calls, um, and respond to certain, you know, certain things. Uh, we'd stick with the six lieutenants, uh, that we, that were the positions that we currently have, and then the firefighters. Hopefully someday and one day we can get back up to sixty-five where it was before. Right now, it's at, uh, I'm not sure what it's at right now, probably about-
I think we're below fifty.
Below fifty. So, so these are some of, this is some of the things, and anybody else speak up for it, you know, if I, if I miss something. But one of the concerns that we have is some of these things can't wait. And most of these things, if not all of these things, cost money. And it's not a little bit of change, it's, it's a, it's a good chunk of change. Now, when, when and, and if, um, uh, the, our current chief, Goethe, retires, a new chief will come in and take over, be a strong chief. And a lot of the items that we have on our list down to, down to item eleven, that chief would be involved with because he'd wanna set things up the way he wants to set things up and, and, uh, and, you know, work it that way. Keeping in mind, it's only gonna be him, uh, and possibly two other guys.
Or her.
I'm sorry, geez, my wife told me not to say that. She said, she said, I, I always say guys, okay, you know? Uh, we were at the funeral yesterday, I tell people there were ten thousand guys there. There weren't, there were ten thousand firefighters there. So, um, some of these things, again, uh, we wanna make sure get into the budget and get done in twenty twenty.
So for this coming spring?
Correct. So, um-
So in the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget, or?
Yes.
The fiscal twenty-one, twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so July one-
Right, I just wanna clarify that that's-
We're carrying a number in the projections now, so that's-
Right.
We have a number in there.
Yep. So, um, so we're only, we're only talking about three full-time positions. We currently have an inspector's position, um, that Steve Charis held, and, and I understand that's back out the, out the bid again, and-
Yeah, we just, the money we're offering is just not enough to attract, so we're, you know, stopping the bleeding, if you will, with Steve, 'cause I think he's doing twelve or sixteen hours a week, and then, uh, uh, Drew Hamel, former chief in Shrewsbury, is our electoral inspector, he's following up with Steve on things that they miss. So we're triaging that at this point till we find someone.
Right. What, one of the things about, uh, about these, uh, these three positions and the fire service in general, um, the fire service, eh, you know, thirty years ago was, was not well-paid. You know, if you made, uh, as a full-time firefighter, if you made thirty-five or forty thousand dollars a year with overtime, you're doing good. It's not that way anymore. Um, the, the people who are in the full-time positions, who could apply for these positions, have masters degrees and fire training way up to here. And, and it does cost a lot of money to, to fund this. Now, our goal is, and it always been since, since we started this, or since we were appointed to this committee, is the maintenance and the maintaining of a call department.
And the strengthening of the call department.
Yes.
And retention.
We don't, we don't wanna hire, not, and we're not gonna hire anybody, but you guys would. We want somebody who's going, whose goal is to maintain the call department. Um, right now, Holliston, um, has a call department, full-time chief, and a full-time inspector too, I think. Great department, they offer great benefits to the, to the firefighters. And we also went through that too, the, about, about what, what is needed in this, uh, to maintain and retain people. Um, the town of Cover, which has eleven thousand people, um, has the largest call fire department in Massachusetts. And they have eighty-five call firefighters. It's amazing. I don't, I don't know how they do it, but their goal is to maintain that call fire department, and that's what they're doing. So it can be done. Town of Millbury has fifty-nine firefighters. They do not have a recruitment or, or a recruitment problem or retaining firefighters. They don't have that problem. So it can be done. It just takes organization and it takes the right people in the right spots. So what we're asking is that these positions be funded, whether they're filled or not in the next, in the next year. That's, you know, that's up to, that's up to you guys, but we do want them funded for the next fiscal year.
Does anybody have any questions for?
I mean, I, I do, I just, um, Tim, is there something, is there?
There was, but I, I yield to you.
Well, no, I mean, I just, um- I take your recommendations at face value, and I, first of all, must say, I appreciate your work, thank you very much. Um, one of the, obviously, when we're talking budget numbers and, and what we're gonna fund, I'm gonna wanna know what the delta is between what you're proposing, what we currently have, what we can afford, and what we could potentially afford if we go back out for, say, another overriding, or another old variety for operational costs. Um, are we going to start taking into account what that number is? How far off are we from a competitive salary that could land somebody and what we have right now? So these are things I don't know.
A, a minimum for a chief, our analysis of the market is a hundred and thirty is the minimum start-
Okay.
For a chief. I'll come back to more on that, but let me get this question out. You ta- you talked about benefits in Cover at the same time, so-
Correct.
Was, is there a benefit that they offered that we take?
Well, what, eh, for example, in, um, in Holliston-
And that's in the MRI report.
Right.
They, they had talked about that.
Yep.
Yeah, they offer, do they offer health insurance?
They offer health insurance, they offer health insurance, they offer life insurance. They, eh, they, so if you're a, uh, you know, a guy, a carpenter, and you don't have health insurance, it all comes with a price, so you have to pay your share, but it also comes with, you have to make so many calls. You have to make a percentage of calls to maintain that, and, and they do it very well.
So in-town landscapers, in-town carpenters, in-town electricians, stuff like that, that could respond as a call member during the day, which is our weak area now with everybody working out of town.
Right.
Um, they would have the incentive that if they didn't have insurance, uh, there's a lot of our guys that would say, I would definitely, I would definitely jump on that because what I'm paying or not paying or not having insurance at all is, is very, very scary. So that would be a definitely, a definite retention point, which is good.
We're also talking about a retirement program. Now, we have a retirement program that was, that was in, put in in two thousand and three, and it's a hundred dollars per year for every year that you're on, so if you're on forty-five years, you get forty-five hundred dollars lump sum. So what we have talked about is, uh, making it a percentage of your top three years, almost like the state, the old state, uh, retirement program. And as you, eh, you, you'd vest at ten, eh, ten years and you'd go to twenty-five years. But you'd get from, uh, ten percent up to, uh-
Eighty.
Eighty percent. So in other words, if you made five thousand dollars your top three years, at the end of, at the end of your career, you would get eighty percent of that, fifteen thousand dollars. Good incentive.
One time or?
One time.
Yeah, yeah.
One time. Good, good incentive, um, you know, uh, we didn't expect, we stopped at twenty-five, uh, because we didn't, we really don't expect twenty-five years from now for people to be on the fire department for forty-five years or thirty, or thirty-five years or whatever it is. But that's another, um, that's another part of what we're talking about as far as benefits, uh, to the, uh, uh, to the firefighters.
For retention.
Right. Also, also, um, is part of the benefits, and, and this is a big dollar item, big dollar item. Station amenities. Right now, there is no wifi or internet in South Grafton or North Grafton. They get basic cable TV. There are no washing machines for gear, there are no dryers, there's a washer in south end- and there's a washer and dryer in the center. The stations themselves are absolutely, and you, if you read the report, they're absolutely inadequate to house anything other than trucks, that's it.
Should they house men?
They, they should house men, and, but it's gonna cost, just throwing this number out there, it's gonna cost four to five million dollars per station to do that. So, eh, again, these are things that we're talking about. Now, are we gonna go out and spend ten million dollars and renovate two stations, you know, to put in bunk houses and everything like that? Eventually, yes, you are, in the very near future, you will. Right now-
Bunking at the place you have bunks now, and that's the center.
Right, right. But, but just like i- if there's, if there's an ice storm or something like that, or some, it's some, uh, disaster where the guys have to stay over, firefighters have to stay over, Jen, remind me of that. That they have to stay over.
We sleep in the trucks, we sleep on the floors, we sleep on the-
In the hose bed.
Hose bed.
Hose bed.
Cots.
Cots, table, you know, I mean, uh, you know, couches, whatever it is. So eventually that's gonna, and that's gonna be part of our report, all that's gonna be part of our report.
But it sounded like the first thing is, is full-time leadership, to deal with the equipment, capital planning, and all the accountability for all those things you're gonna have as benefits, the call run volume.
Yep.
So-
Yep, that's-
I mean, that was the first thing they noted as the-
Yep, that's, that's, that's what it is.
It's just an odd transition for us, right? We've been volunteer all the time for all the ranks.
And you still will be.
Yeah, well, well, not for the rank.
Other than, other than the management of the department.
So that's, I, I, you know, we just need to have that conversation to be comfortable with moving forward in that area.
It would be like, it would be like, th- this is, eh, on a smaller scale, it would be like if you took over the ambulance. If you took over the ambulance department and you thought about it and you said, geez, we could make money doing this. Thirty years ago, if you did it, you could make money out of it. Right now, it would cost you two million dollars right up front. And, and then you wouldn't make money if at all.
You'd have cash.
For, for a long ti- for a long time.
You'd have cash.
You'd have cash, but you wouldn't, but you wouldn't pay for anything.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know, we have to do the analysis on the, obviously, they're making money, we don't pay anything 'cause we negotiated a good deal.
Right.
But there's, there's seven hundred and fifty thousand in the mix. Can I have guys who are medics and make enough, pay enough to do both? I, I don't, I mean, I don't know, I'm not saying advocating one way or the other, but-
You can do that when I get off the ambulance committee.
I don't know, chatting gives me a lot of authority. I, I think we have to investigate, I don't say we-
Absolutely, no, no.
I think we have to do the math to see where we're coming from.
You're absolutely correct, but it's, but it, it's, it, it's not a, it's not a failsafe for, for, for a town in, in, you know, two thousand and nineteen to start off an ambulance company. We have-
To get certified by the state is nearly impossible for medic, but I, I know, it's, it's not an easy thing, but it needs to be analyzed because if I have, if we get to the global, all stations filled, two in, two out, eh, eh, with eight guys, tens and fourteens, however it works, they gotta make runs, 'cause the majority of the runs we have now are medical.
Right.
Not to fire, so-
Correct.
I can't have sixteen guys just sitting there, I want them there, but I just, they, they gotta do other services that could yield revenue back. But that's, the whole, whole analysis that needs to be done, so I'm not advocating, I'm saying we need to look at it. But it sounds like leadership is the first. And again, this is, like I say, uh, our leadership, our elder, uh, people on the department is dwindling, and it has been dwindling. And we've been, we've been bringing this up for the last ten years of saying, and look how long it's taken, look how long it's taken to get an inspector, look how long it's taken to get this committee together, look how long it's taken to get all of this stuff in. It takes time, so if this gets stretched out past this next budget, it, we're gonna be in big trouble, you know? Uh, Chief Goethe has been on, uh, forty-seven years, forty-seven years, eighteen as chief. Uh, he's, it's a great deal, you know? His lucky rep, plumbing lets him work, uh, lets him respond to calls, he responds to ninety-five percent of the calls, twenty-four seven. You're not gonna have that, you're not gonna have that, you're getting outside chief who lives outside of town, he's gonna be here eight hours a day, you know, and he's gonna be gone, you know? He might come back, big, big calls and stuff like that, he may show up, that's all up in the air, and that's what happens in the other surrounding towns that have those type of chiefs. So we have to strengthen the call department to be able to handle that. And again, that's, you know, some of the things that we're looking at. And also, we'll, you know, eh, not speaking as a committee member, speaking as, um, a captain on the fire department, you know, we have a great deal with Chief Goethe right now, a very respected chief in the, in the valley, in the, in the, uh, district, and does a great job for us, but his hands are tied, he has a full-time job, uh, paperwork, the, the, all that kinda stuff that he has to do after hours is very, it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger, just like everybody else's paperwork, you know, all day long, it's, it gets bigger. There's more stuff to take care of. So I don't see us putting in a chief before he retires, unless he retires, or pushing him out. I say we get, we get him some help, and that, and it may be, it may be an assistant chief to work the daily, everyday paperwork, trail, the training, the things that we're talking about here, um, setting up the SOPs, SOGs, all that stuff. And when he decides to retire, that person might move up and be the next chief. That'd be an incentive, like you're saying, it may not be a hundred and thirty, you may be able to bring someone in at a hundred and fifteen with anticipation that if he lasts all the way to sixty-five, which is two and a half years, it's not, it's not a long time. And then he's forced out, just like, uh, District Chief Parker is forced out at, what, two weeks? Two weeks. Two weeks. So that's where we stand, and it's getting smaller and smaller and smaller.
I think that's been the trepidation even for me to do the study, it's 'cause we knew people were aging out and worrying that we somehow know we need to move to a full-time status in some capacity, but we slight people who have given forty-seven years of volunteerism, and now, you know what I mean?
That's what I'm saying.
We don't want that to be the reason why we don't do it, it's 'cause we're worried we're gonna hurt someone's feelings, but we gotta honor those folks at the same time, it's a, it's a tough balance.
So the, like I'm saying, the best, you know, the best scenario is, you know, eh, we're all call members, we all have our full-time jobs and stuff like that. We're not bound to the Town of Grafton Fire Department at all, other than we get in tomorrow. We don't have to wait till sixty-five, we don't have, a lot of guys don't, a lot of guys get off, uh, after twenty years, you know? Now, thanks for that, no. So those are the type of things that happen, you know?
What kinda car do you want?
Life changes, life, life changes.
It's a young man's game, trust me.
Yeah. Life changes, you know, business, uh, his, his work changed and stuff like that, eh, he ended up getting off the department before sixty-five. That happens. So as this, as this department shrinks, and that manpower, and that, uh, experience part of it, and like- And like I say, I don't think, I don't think anybody in this town wants to force anybody out. But we also have to remember that Chief Gothy, myself, uh, the older members, we could be done next week, we could be done next month, we could be done next year, uh, fiscal year, and then within two and a half years, we're definitely done because of the sixty-five. So those are the type of things we have to keep in mind. So as much as we're saying, we, we need to put in a full-time chief, we need to put in a full-time inspector, we need to put in a full-time captain for training. Those positions don't necessarily have to be that way. They can still work on. We have a great deal with what we're saving with Chief Gothy and the rest of them.
It's almost like you're gonna run a shadow department, be ready to step in when-
Yeah.
Well, transition and succession planning in, in top leadership positions, especially around public safety is crucial, right? And it's one of those things where you don't wanna have, uh, someone new come in and then have, uh, any interruption in operations. So that's something to, you know, the point earlier that, that would be, like you said, the ideal scenario.
Right. And you may entice better candidates knowing that there is a two and a half year window in all of these positions of them moving forward, you know? Moving up the rank, uh, in their full-time job, if that's what it comes to be. But like Ray said about the amenities, so we're not looking to man three stations right now. We're not, not even close to that. We're looking to build on what we have and then that training, that recruiting. The captains, the lieutenants would work with the new people so that we can start bringing people in. We can, we can find out how we can fund those new people coming in and how we can retain them and give them a, a, a good option of why they should stay on.
Well, I know you, if I ca- if I may.
Sure.
When Ed was chair, I had a loop going back and forth with, between Mickey and I don't know if you were on a second. But MRI, you know, there's a SAFER grant that Charlton got. They funded posi- I think nine positions.
Right.
I, we'd be in a position to get it. Unfortunately, we don't have the administrative capacity to apply for it, so I want MRI to do that. So maybe that can help with a portion of adding to this fiscal twenty number. So I wanna move, advance that ball because that's a March-April application. And that might solve the funding piece. But, you know, going for that assistant versus chief and figuring out what that transition looks like, I gotta kinda think that through a little bit.
One, one thing that you have to keep in mind is this, this, who, whoever comes in or however it, it, it gets worked out. This is an enormous task. So this is almost starting from square one with bringing more people onto the department, working on the training, working on the organization, working on standard operating procedures, life safety, you know, uh, firefighting, all the way down the line, the hazmat, the stuff that, the stuff that, as Ricky said, if you're part-time, you can't do it all. If you don't have an organization, you can't do it at all. So what we need to have is an organization that can do all of that. And it's gonna take the next organization that comes into this department years to get it right and to get it all done right.
It's gonna be bumpy. We just have to go into it eyes wide open.
Yep.
And you, and you also have to realize that there's guys that, uh, depending on who that assistant or chief becomes, depending on who it is, I mean, we may not, I, I'm on my fifth, Chief Gothy is my fifth chief since I got on the department. The only one I had to prove myself to was my first chief. And after that, every chief was from within, knew our capabilities, knew our responsibilities, uh, promoted us, that kind of stuff up the ladder. So for a new person to come in from the outside and then start questioning my abilities or considering, oh, I don't know if you can do this or I don't know, my days are gonna be limited. It's like, why am I gonna put up with that as a call member of the department that's basically gonna end up with forty-six hundred dollars when I, when I say goodbye, you know, so it's like-
Not if we get the retirement in before you get off.
Oh, thanks. So, so those are the type of things that, you know, we have to, it's gotta be, it's gonna be a tough transition, no matter how it comes in.
Yep.
All of a sudden, we're gonna have somebody that's all of a sudden telling us what to do when we've been very much a nucleus of working together to make sure that these things get done. You know, facilities need work, but we do have a, we do have a good nucleus of apparatus, there's no doubt about that. The town's been very good about our apparatus and I, yeah.
You, you got enough trucks.
Yeah.
Don't buy anymore.
No. There isn't enough guys to run them all.
Right. You gotta have enough people to go and run them.
And when you did the count and Ray was talking about numbers, there's a, down at the Millbury Credit Union, there is a wide, uh, picture on the wall from the eighteen hundreds that was taken up in the center. And then one day I was in there and I counted the men. When they first opened that bank, I, I counted the men, there was ninety men in the, in the apparatus. And at that particular time, we had ninety men still on this department. We don't anymore. With our, with our regulars and our auxiliary and our chiefs, uh, we had ninety men. And that's, that, 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 and for, when Ray was on and stuff like that, we were very, we, we were the largest call department in the state of Massachusetts for a long time. So yeah, it's, it's, it's enormous. It really is. And it's carried on for many, many years here in Grafton and now it's, and now it's dwindling and it's scary.
So we will submit a full report probably in January and, um, but we wanted to make sure that this got out there now so that, uh, things can be planned or funds can be found somewhere by raising proposition two and a half.
Three and a half.
Which would give you more than enough money to fund all these positions, by the way.
And then looking at, last night, looking at the public hearing and it was brought up that, you know, Peter brought up your schedule. That's why we asked for this to be put on tonight so we could get here because with your schedule, with holidays and stuff like that, now, next thing you know, we're coming to you in January, February to report out and, you know, this, this stuff's really gonna get going.
Yep.
And our charge was not to consider money. So our charge was to go through the report, prioritize it, present it to you. And yeah, right, you have to go out and find out what this is gonna cost you.
Okay, and answer your questions and you decide where the money's coming from.
Right.
We're not going out doing interviews and trying to find out what's going on with chiefs. The only difference we would have with a chief is no ambulance service. So you look out at most towns, they do have it and we wouldn't be looking for that. Um, other than that. Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't disqualify them if they had experience.
No, no, no.
So.
You're buying something that you don't need right now. And if you, if you get somebody-
That's the essence of a report.
Let's put it this way, there's no problem with the first responder service, okay?
Right.
So if you've got, if you've got, you know, Sutton has, uh, has two full-time people. They do first responder. So the ambulance goes out to a call, they, they send a-
Even the whole city of Worcester.
They send an engine, so.
They don't run the ambulance.
So, uh, yeah, Worcester goes, Worcester goes on first responder, Shrewsbury does first responder. If you've got guys in the station, yeah, you get in that truck and you go because you may be the first one there and you may be able to do something. Absolutely.
Kind of like us in the winter time.
Yeah.
And we've got a good rapport with the ambulance company now. We, we work very closely with them. They come to every one of our, our calls. They're there, we, they stay there mainly to protect us, you know? Us old guys, you know? Stick around unless you get a call, just in case. But they're very good. They worked very good with us and, uh, we work with them. If they need our assistance, what we need their assistance, they've been great. So we do have a real nice rapport with that whole system, uh, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna step on that for sure. But we would definitely, you know, be open to first responding and helping them in any way we can because like you said, the majority of the calls now are ambulances.
I mean, right, you know, it was, when I got here in eight, it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar ambulance fee that we were charged from-
Yep.
Whoever it was at the time.
And that was a deal. That was a deal.
Yeah. No, it was a deal at that, but it's a better deal now.
You know, it's a lot better deal.
I gotta add that to the list.
It's a lot better deal. Yeah, nothing is really good, you know?
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for, uh-
Thanks for all your work.
Thanks for fitting us in and, uh, we'll see you back in January.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have, um, a resignation that was submitted. Um, Katie Brown is resigning, submitted a resignation effective immediately from the library board of trustees. Now, of course, that's an elected position, that's not an appointed position. But, um, I still think we should send her a letter of thanks for her service. So that's, that's kind of the way that one came, came out, so.
Ma'am Chair, I motion that the select board send to Katie Brown, um, a letter of appreciation for her services to the town and the library.
I have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, next we have, um, under new business, Horsley Witten Group vote to sign contract for visioning for Village Gateway at existing DPW site. Tim, do you wanna take us through that?
Yeah, I reported back in July that we, we were one of ten communities to get a grant for mass development for our technical assistance program. And the reason why this, you can't see it because I can't really manipulate this computer well, but the old DPW site will be vacant soon when the new DPW facility comes online. So previous boards, uh, I recommended to them that there should be a, a gateway of commercial capacity for this site. It's an oddly shaped site. It goes back behind the post office and a, uh, two-family residence and then the barn closes to, let me see if I can just put the cursor over here. So this, it goes from here, travels back and then it encompasses this whole parcel. So what we, what we did is we applied for a grant for technical assistance for mass development, which we were awarded thirty-five thousand. This will be the same type of visioning process we use for the Bolak Plaza and rezoning that particular piece. Uh, we've had a lot of discussions and a lot of people approaching us about that particular location at Bolak, but obviously no, no sale as of yet. But we wanna go through that process with the community and that's what this grant will do with mass development. So the, the, the Whitney Group will actually do the work in terms of coordinating the outreach effort and preparing a report for the highest and best use of this particular facility. We have a premise that, you know, mixed use would be the best use from housing and commercials, so commercial on the bottom and housing above. You know, we'll go to bid, just like we're doing with Eight Pine Street and see what the, see what the proposals come back with. But we wanna do this process first, so that's what the, uh, agreement is for the chair to sign, if you're so inclined.
Does anybody have any questions for Tim?
Would the results of this proposal be something that would be mandatory disclosure for any potential buyer going forward in the future?
Part of the, the document that you have, we, we did a phase one with Parker Environmental. We have to do a phase two. So I'm kinda stuck, right? If I, I, people are gonna balk and maybe not bid if they think there's a potential because it's been always used as a DPW facility. So I'm worried about what's in the soil. So I wanna do those, uh, samples. I have a lot of, um, faith that it'll come back clean because we took the tanks out. There were diesel fuel tanks underground, maybe two thousand and thirteen, we brought them above ground with anticipation of moving them in the future. So when we took them out of the ground, we had to have a licensed site professional on site and we found no contamination of the soil on the left-hand side of the garage. So I'm optimistic, but I will have to do a phase two. Parker Environmental, there'll be another contract to get next meeting for that phase two to happen because they need to kinda happen, not in tandem, but they need to complement each other. And I need to provide full disclosure for the site. And if it's really bad, you know, unfortunately, we'll be looking at capping it and making a parking lot. It should be horrible. Just not the first, that's not our first goal, but that's, I think we're gonna be all right, but yes, we need to do that and we do need to disclose it.
Okay.
Ma'am Chair, is the grant only to look at commercial application for?
No, they'll take community input, they'll have community outreach meetings and we'll walk the site and have site visits with the community and, and take input. And based on, you know, traffic counts, best use, complimentary use around it, they'll give us a, a recommendation on what the highest and best use would be.
Do you have an idea, Mr. Carlson, you wanna share?
It's one of the few, it's one of the few town-owned parcels that abuts, I think, one of, uh, you know, our parks that we highlight on North Street, uh, Norcross Park. Um, it would be nice to somehow figure out if there is some sort of compatible use, uh, because having access from, um, one forty, uh, access to that site into the adjacent fields and, and, uh, infrastructure across the way at Norcross Park, I think also would be a good public use of the land as well. Uh, and I'm not discounting the commercial aspect of it, but I wanna be sure that we're not looking at this with a narrow focus, but we're looking at this, uh, you know, for all use.
Yeah, and, and, and fairness to all other boards as we move this TPW project along, you know, commercial was the focus. There, there's been a long talk inside of recreation, uh, about a recreation facility and this, depending on soil, would be a logical location because of the Norcross spot. But, you know, you have money going out in that instance without money coming in. So it's a public policy discussion you guys need to-
Right, but somehow, I mean, in my thought, because you asked, you know, I'm thinking outside the box here, is ideally, you know, is this something that could be split and have a mixed use? In other words, a portion of it could be developed for a commercial aspect, but instead of, um, you know, you know, don't, don't discount this idea, but instead of building residential units in the area, we build something more to the community aspect where a potential rec center of some sort could go there just because of where that lot is located and its strategic, um, value to the community for public use.
Yeah, I, again, it, it, it's an odd shape, so if you, depending on what the feedback comes out of the divisioning session, and, and that, that should be part of the discussion. But again, you'll have outlay of cash for that type of development because we would have to build it ourselves.
Yep.
And I think other boards wanted to see it commercial and have revenue coming in and it can be, can be either one, can be either one.
Yeah, or a good mix of use of both. You know, and like you said, it is an oddly shaped-
It's a little tight because there are a lot of wetlands there and even to get to Norcross, we would have to build some type of, um, boardwalk
Yep.
over the wetlands to get back there. But yeah, all those discussions have to come out through this visioning process.
Okay.
I'm all for a recreation center.
I am too. I always joke about a pool, but nobody ever finds it entertaining or anything, so.
Don't you know it's under the gym floor at the high school, Jen?
I know, I look for that pool all the time. All right, so does anybody have any additional questions? Anybody in the audience, any additional questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion if you guys are ready.
Ma'am Chair, I move the board vote to authorize the chair to sign, uh, the memorandum of agreement with mass development for visioning work to be completed on the Upton Street Gateway and existing DPW, uh, facility.
Second. All right, I have a motion and second. I'm not sure if Donna, I believe Donna is not with us anymore, but we will still, we're just gonna finish the meeting out by roll call anyway, just-
She's still alive.
Just, she's out there some, she's just not on the phone anymore. So, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, um, by roll call.
Carlson, aye.
Thomas, aye. Sorry.
Defazio, aye.
Sorry, Prisby, aye.
All right, that has passed. Next we have, um, select board reports. So, um, any members? You already gave yours?
Yep.
All right, uh, Dory and Ed, do you have anything for select board?
Um, just that I reached out to Matt Ofton and we are, um, I have, we have not confirmed the December tenth date yet for the CIPC workshop, but, um, as soon as we do, I will let you know.
Great. Um, any, anyone else? I just have a quick, um, quick report about, um, Super Park. We did, um, go out for a request for a proposal. We did get ten responses. Um, that's to, to bring somebody in for, um, to help figure out what we can do on that site and to get a comprehensive planning, a landscape architect is the type of-
Design services, yep.
Design services. And, um, so we did get ten responses, which is really good, and, um, we'll start to go over those proposals and Andy DeShane is involved to help us out. And, um, I'll fill you in on what, what happens next, but we're just gonna, um, see, look at the proposals and see which, which ones look good. And then, um, I feel like I had something else. We've had a busy week and I should've written it down. What other meeting? I feel like I've been to a zillion meetings this week.
You went to the planning thing for solar.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. So I did attend that CMRCP, um, meeting up in Sterling. And there was a panel discussion about, um, solar and different, um, bylaws and, and basically a lot of communities are having, um, issues. There are a lot of solar applications to their planning boards. And there's been a lot of concerns about, um, the batteries that they use to store power. And also just in a, in more rural communities, there's a lot of, um, clear cutting to put in these facilities. So it was good, um, it was great information. And, um, our planning board is dealing with that. It's their, it's their stuff. But, um, that's it for me. Tim?
I just have a couple of things. Uh, today I got a letter from Safe Roots to School from Mass DOT. A couple, probably over the summer, I think I reported out on a preliminary grant application to have sidewalks from Millbury Street School up to Shawn Michael. So to get all those communities to be able to walk to school and provide that. Or just to walk safely along Millbury Street would be a great thing. So we did get notice of eligibility for a seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollar grant. of eligibility for a seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollar grant. So we, I reached out immediately, obviously, to Mass DOT to figure out timing and more details. So that'll, that's a, a good thing for us. We were going to try to do it in piecemeal between the school department and us for a capital plan to kinda like put pieces of sidewalk in all the way up to Fitzpatrick and then beyond. So it's good that we have a grant and a grand opportunity to do that. Uh, regarding bidding, we did get three appraisals to bid, our appraisal services to bid on Main Street. I reported once before that Main Street for that project through Mass DOT requires takings. Some are temporary, some are aerial trespass with lines or guidewires or telephone poles need to be moved. So we have to do an appraisal of each individual taking, temporary or permanent, and then an appraiser has to evaluate those appraisers. And we have to document every conversation we have with every landowner. I think there's two hundred and fifteen. So we got those back. We haven't opened them yet. But the initial estimates I got when I made phone calls to get quotes, the numbers for their services exceeded the value of all cumulative taking. So it's a horrible situation, but I'll pay more for the appraisals than I will to actually take the property. So we're hoping people will see the value in, you know, redesigning Main Street and donate the land as a gift. It'll help them on their, you know, value, valuation of their taxes, probably not significantly, but, uh, we have to have individual conversations with them once we have a, a contract. Chapter ninety will pay for those takings and for this cost of the appraisal. So there could be a contract to you as early as December three, selecting that particular vendor who will do those appraisals, which will cost a lot of money. But if you wanna do an eight million dollar project, you have to do it this way. There's no other way around it. Uh, had a meeting today with the light vendor, uh, moving forward with the LED conversion for the lights. We've done the audit. We actually have eight hundred and forty-eight streetlights. Some are decorative, some are just Cobra overhead lights. It's a little bit higher than the number we got from National Grid. That's why you do the audit. That's why I don't, you've gone through that, obviously. Uh, contract negotiations with the clerical unit has started with the exchange of ground rules. So that contract's up July one. So we're starting on that process. And I guess I just needed to know from the board relative to Institute Road and selling of that parcel or not. I know you had particular questions. We never connected, but maybe December third meeting, we can come back to that particular issue?
Sure.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, just one question on one of your reports. Um, on that safer grant, on that sidewalk component, when you were talking about from Millbury Street School to Cortland Way, um, is there any anticipation or plan of extending that down Millbury Street to Blanchard Road as well? Or is it just across the street?
Uh, yeah, if I said Cortland, I, I, I thought I said Shawn Michael.
Shawn Michael, so all the way down.
All the way down. It will cross, it'll stay on the Millbury Street School side.
Yep.
Past Blanchard, and then it'll go across where you have better line of sight to get on the other side of the street and go to the pump station.
Okay.
And go to Shawn Michael.
Okay, so it's extended all the way down. It's not just in that.
So it'll collect that whole neighborhood of Cortland and all the neighborhoods back of Fitzpatrick and.
Okay.
Blanchard.
And, and it'll begin at the beginning of the school.
Yeah, probably the east entrance.
East entrance, yep.
And it would run all the way up.
Makes sense, okay.
Ma'am Chair, one more question, too. Uh, who's the vendor that was chosen for the LED streetlights?
For the audit is Tango.
Yep, good.
Um, so there's a vendor that will buy the lights from, and there's a vendor that will do with the install.
Yep.
Um, some trepidation on the timing of that all because I, they want me to buy the lights before I have the vendor and before I have the controls because we'll actually have wireless controls for dimming the lights, up brightening the lights. So I, I don't wanna really publicize that piece.
Yep, yep.
But it, it's, it's odd because I, I picked the unit, but hopefully the vendor who gives me the controls can install them in the unit, but they're forcing me to kinda move forward with one before the other. So we're, we're trying to figure out how to ride that clutch a little bit.
Okay.
But Tango is the group.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you.
Um, before we move on, I just wanted to, um, make sure we're all on the same page. So our next meeting, next Select Board meeting is December third, but we do have that meeting on December second with the school committee. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that. December second, school committee. It will be in Conference Room F, not in this room because this room is being used. So just wanna remind people of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, correspondence, Peter?
Yep, so I got a couple of correspondents to share with the committee. Uh, first one I wanted to just read and maybe if the committee would like to paraphrase. We received correspondence from the Lake Quin-Sigment Commission, um, uh, from, uh, Bill Nelson. Um, if you want, I can read the full or, oh, look at that, she provided a summary. Joanne gets, uh, she gets a, she gets a name.
I mean, you, you, you can make your own summary if you'd rather.
I was just going in order and that's typically is, this hasn't been provided before.
Yep.
Um, basically, uh, Bill Nelson, Grafton's appointed commissioner on the Lake Quin-Sigment Commission is seeking input from the board on the issue of invasive, noxious, alien, aquatic plant species in Lake Quin-Sigment and Flint Pond. Specifically, uh, Bill is asking the board's view on the following. Work on improve the water quality of this natural resource flowing through and in Grafton. Its value to Grafton residents, both as a recreational resource and factor in determining real estate values in Grafton. What the commission should be doing in addition to protect this valuable and unique Grafton resource. Um, we all received a copy of that, so.
I think we should invite him in. I think I'll reach out.
Okay.
Great.
That's great. And then the other one I received, one is, uh, from Carol Zimba from Seaver Farm Road. This email came to, uh, the Assistant Town Administrator. Ms. Zimba feels the town would be setting a precedent if they were to allow street play on Seaver Farm Road. She suggests utilizing the cul-de-sac on Seaver Farm Road, I guess as an alternative location. If you recall, when we looked on the map, it was further down the road, um, towards the end and then looped back around. Um, that's all I have for correspondence tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, for discussion, we have fiscal year twenty twenty-one projections. Um, Ed had asked for this to be on the agenda, so I will send it over to him.
Sure. We got, um, some projections that Tim and Becca provided us with, um, about a month and a half ago. And I know we have the December second meeting coming up with the school committee. So as I was going through them, I just had certain questions about, um, the sets that we were provided and I, I wanted to ask them here publicly so that we would just have the benefit of the discussion. Um, so you had given us, um, a projection entitled five-year balanced budget projections, a second one entitled five-year budget projections, full school and fire requests only. And, um, and then there was a third one, five-year budget projections, full school and all municipal requests. And I'll just label those one, two, and three consecutively for, for ease of discussing them. Um, so the, the first one is, is fairly self-explanatory. I just wanted to understand, I think, a, a couple of the variables, and this won't be, for my part, a long discussion. Um, one of my questions about this is already answered by Mary Oliver concerning, um, new growth. And the second question I had on number two, the five-year with full school and fire requests only, um, where, and maybe I'm missing it, where is the, where's the percentage fire increase located under full fire?
The, the revenues, I, I really need to numeric these. If you look at the revenues, Fire Department Grant Revenue, the one thirty is there. And inside of the municipal expenses, all town expenses, three, five, nine, nine.
I see.
It's inside of there. We, we broke it out, not by department, because I don't have all budgets reviewed.
Sure.
But I have the sheet that we shared with you before relative to the, the dollar figures for each area inside the budget where we anticipate growth, either known, uh, just because we know where the trend of health insurance is, we know my union pay increases from police, um, and others will cost. So we've kinda listened to them out here. In the backdrop of knowing what the new growth allowance on the two and a half, the one percent increase in revenue from state aid, that totals two point one million. So we kinda just broke it out to show where all that new money goes to, uh, on this slide. So long, longer answer than you wanted, probably.
No, no, that's good. Um, while you have that slide up, what's the percentage increase on municipal retirement?
Uh, we're carrying, I'm gonna say five. And the, these, the dollar figures on, and they're set, right?
Right.
They're gonna, they're gonna send me a bill. You know, we, we argue with them about what their numbers are in terms of, the market's doing great. They should be making more, you know, they're conservative, they're limited in what they can invest in, but they still should be doing better in terms of fully funding it by their deadline. But that's the best guess is a hundred and twelve thousand.
And what's their deadline for fully fund?
Two thousand thirty-four, twenty-four. It's a ways out.
Okay. All right. Um, and so that grant for the one thirty, what's this grant again?
It's called the Safer Grant. It's a federal program much like the COPS FAST Grant that we used to get. So it adds police to the force. So the Safer Grant, Charlton, I think, is the only community in Central Mass to get it maybe three or four years ago. And it's a three-year grant. And it funded initially eight positions. I hope I don't get that wrong, but I think eight positions. And then it curtailed down so that the town had to pick up those eight positions and it went out in successive years.
Was this the one that was administratively difficult for you to be able to?
Oh, yeah. I mean, in terms of the data, since MRI just did all the analysis and collection, it'd be so much easier for them to make application.
So is it fairly unlikely that we're gonna be able to pick that up for the next year? I mean, if only one town gets it and it's really hard to do.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm optimistic. We, we're not, we're not handicapped in any way. We have the need. We're the only department that still has no full-time staff in, in Massachusetts. It's just, it's an amazing, we've been so lucky for so long. So I, 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 I can't, I can't hedge. I can't tell you if it's a twenty-five percent yes.
Okay.
I just, I couldn't guess.
So I think that was, that was my question for number two, I believe. And then number...
If I may, Mr. Prisby, just to add to that one part, you know, Mr. Meridian's, uh, suggestion earlier about potentially reaching out to him, uh, for these grants to see, uh, between himself and Senator Moore, might, you know, anything we can do to maybe help and get that moving along?
Always do.
Yeah, okay.
Always do. But I'm glad you reminded me.
Cause, cause I'll get reminded from, uh, Mr. Meridian.
They're blind to seed on more than you, more than you know.
Yep.
And they, they're in the book, which we appreciate.
And then on number three, the third slide, um, the municipal, it's full school and municipal requests. And that municipal percentage increase is seven point four right there as opposed to the four point two on the second slide. So what is, what do we get, what are we either getting or losing depending how you look at it with the additional three point two percent requests right there?
These are, are rolled up budget requests without any analysis or look at by myself or Becca. So we kind of, if we gave everybody everything they asked for, so the chief, there, there's some things that are relative to contract negotiations in that proposal. Uh, there's a full-time officer, another police officer that he would ask under his, you know, best-case scenario for everybody. So those are some of the things. I can't give you details. I haven't, I haven't digested all of their proposals.
Sure, okay.
I just rolled them up just to get them on a sheet to say, if we're just to give everybody what they wanted, this is what you're looking at.
I was wondering.
Any work.
Okay. I was just wondering if this is like big, one big ticket item. It's usually not that, but it was, that number jumped out at me as being sort of a, almost twice the size of what we otherwise would.
Yes.
Would allow. Um, so there, which says to me that there are a lot of needs or various departments that we're gonna be tackling over the course of the budget year. Um, simultaneously talking about a known deficit right now as well as needs that, um, department heads think operationally, this is, these are things they're gonna need to, to move forward. Um, you know, personnel for safety, and I'm sure, you know, increases to either retain, retain or attract people that we really like. And we wanna keep aboard to maintain service levels. And all these things we're talking about are costs, but there's a service level that's provided. There's a benefit there. You know, if you like the town that you live in, and a lot of people must because property values are rising, then you're losing something if you, if you're not funding these things. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood, um, before we get into the conversation on the second, um, what our, our choices are. So I think I get it now.
Does anybody, um, have anything additional to, to ask or say? All right. Um, meeting minutes.
Ma'am Chair?
Yes.
A motion that the Select Board approve the meeting minutes for November fifth, two thousand nineteen, as presented.
Um, actually, I have a thing. On the, trying to find it. We were talking about a five point nine percent increase in the school budget.
That would, I think that's what they published as their ask, best case.
Oh, yeah. So line two sixty-two. Uh, the last number from the school department was five point nine million. I think that was a five point nine percent increase. I don't think they're total.
Oh, yeah. No, it was two, it was two point one.
Right.
Which is very similar to the exact number of new dollars you have.
Right.
So, yeah, five point nine and two point one is the math on it, by the way.
Okay, so we should amend that, the motion.
Ma'am Chair, a motion that the Select Board approve the meeting minutes for November fifth, two thousand nineteen, with the amended on line two sixty-two to reflect, uh, five point nine million to be five point nine percent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Again, we'll do roll call just to.
Carlson, aye.
Thomas, aye.
DeFazio, aye.
Prisby, aye.
All right. Uh, minutes have been approved. And, um, we already had our executive session, so I believe, uh, we are ready for an adjournment.
Ma'am Chair, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, hearing, any discussion? Hearing none by roll call.
Carlson, aye.
Thomas, aye.
DeFazio, aye.
Prisby, aye.
All right.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, everyone.